Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, April 18. Role call.
Councilmember Partnett.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Scott, would you lead us tonight?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any urgency items?
No.
Look for a motion to accept.
And Mayor, move to accept the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. We will waive the reading of the ordinances except by title, approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of April 3, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of April 4, 2017, approve the warrant register of April 6, 2017, adopt the proposed resolution to reaffirm the necessity of AB 1600 development impact fees, and approve the continuation of the proclamation declaring a local state of emergency due to flooding and extreme weather. Does anyone want to pull anything? Anyone from the public? Look for a motion to approve.
And Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are moving into public presentations and citizen input. If anyone has any citizen input for anything not on the agenda, now's the time to come on up. Do we have anything, Kelly?
I don't have any cards.
Last chance. All right. Then we are going to move on to proclamation. We have a very impressive young man here tonight, Alexander Bear. You want to come on up? We received a letter from Troop 39 that you have recently earned the rank of Eagle Scout. We're all very impressed by your dedication and proud of your service, and we'd like to honor you today. I will meet you down there. Hey.
Hello.
So, when Alex was in, what was it, 8th grade?
Yeah.
We all went on the DC trip together. I got to know him a little bit. All right. Why don't you turn around and face everybody? Tonight, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Lakeport. Whereas Alexander Bear is a member of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 39, and has been a source of pride to his family and his community through his dedication to the ideals and standards of scouting. And whereas Alexander Bear has completed a major community service project by building wheelchair-accessible ramps and rehabbing deckwork for a newly wheelchair-bound resident in his community. And whereas Alexander Bear is a member of the National Eagle Scout Association. And whereas Alexander Bear's scouting experience has been distinguished by 27 merit badges earned by learning and applying skills which will greatly benefit him throughout his life. And whereas Alexander Bear has achieved his accomplishments in the scouting program while maintaining academic excellence and sporting honors throughout his educational career. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest honor awarded to the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas an Eagle Scout Court of Honor is convened for Alex Bear at the LDS Church in Lakeport on April 20, 2017, and now therefore be it proclaimed that Alexander Bear is hereby commended and congratulated on achieving the coveted rank of Eagle Scout and on his outstanding achievements in pursuit of that honor. Thanks. (applause)
Not take a photo.
Thank you. Nice job. Very good job.
Thank you.[318.33][318.33](applause)
We need to get him to volunteer around the city. All right, moving on to council business. Utility policies and procedures. Finance Director.
Good evening, Council. Mayor. We have some updates to our utility billing administrative policy. Just a little background, to better serve customers of the city's water and sewer services and franchise garbage services, we follow administrative policy. The policy was originally adopted on September 22, 2004, and was outdated from some of the operating practices that have been implemented from different staff overseeing the utility billing. Some significant updates to the policy include correcting deadline dates and timeline periods, clarifying discontinuation of services for non-payments, clarifying account deposit requirements, clarifying responsibility of property owners for which the property is metered by a master meter or that received only partial utilities offered by the city, clarify lien and taxural procedures for delinquent accounts, and adding an account adjustment policy for water leaks. So you have, I believe we gave you guys the red line version that had the changes made, and then a clean version that would be the policy that we're asking you to adopt in the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I have a comment. I happen to be a victim of the unfortunate activities that happened. The mail, we got one of the postcards that slipped into a magazine, and then it was, I think it was somewhere around December 15 or something like that, I got the bill, and I said, "Oh yeah, here's the water bill." And I didn't realize that I'd already been delinquent, and then on Christmas Eve, the little city minions went out there and shut off my water.
Watch it.[466.12][466.12](laughter)
And I was, like, shocked and dismayed because I never even got the original bill, and so I kind of forgot about that one when I looked at it. And then, when I realized, I called in the morning about 9 o'clock. This is how efficient they were. They said, "We've already been up there and shut your water off." And it's like, "Thank you very much. It's Christmas Eve, and we won't have any water, there won't be any showering, there won't be any coffee unless we take it out of the toilet bowl," or something like that. Anyway, I managed to get them out, and they took care of it. What I'm happy to see is that there's going to be a method where they will contact you. This was long before Margaret and everyone here. I think Doug may have been responsible.[508.43][508.43](laughter)
I think I sent them out there, yes.[512.12][512.12](laughter)
Nevertheless, it turned out that I found the water bill two months later when I was leafing through, you know, a magazine, and so I knew that I had owed it anyway when I saw it. But the fact that we have door hangers and things like that, I think is very important because the last thing you want to be is surprised that suddenly your water's cut off and no one bothered to contact you, you know, over the phone or with a tag on your door or some such manner. Because, you know, everybody's busy, and things happen. Even the most prudent people can have issues with a bill that gets lost. And like the little cards, they do get sometimes leafed into something else, and you may not see it. So I was very happy to see that you have protocols in place so that that will never happen to anyone else, because I'll tell you one thing, on Christmas Eve. And then I had to pay, you know, to pay to get it turned off, I had to pay to get it turned on. And that was a little disheartening to me, to say the least, especially on Christmas Eve when I had other things to deal with. So I think that these revisions are very, very complete, and I think that they'll prevent anyone else from ever having that kind of problem.
And one of the revisions, too, is we don't close on, we don't turn the water off on Fridays, and we don't turn it off before a holiday. So that wouldn't happen to you today if you did it on Christmas Eve. I'm mortified that we did that on Christmas Eve.[590.16][590.16](laughter)
And I was shocked that, when I tried to pay it at 8:15, I literally got into the store and I called immediately and said they've already been out there. And I'm like, "Wow." If you wanted it turned on at 8 o'clock, it would have never happened. But turning it off, we can make arrangements for that, right Doug?
Right.[608.16][608.16](laughter)
So kudos on the improvements.
Well, this item really wasn't about you, but...[615.41][615.41](laughter)
Well, I think it's important that it may have happened, it may have happened in the past to others, and I'm glad that it will never happen again.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one. I was reading through this, and I noticed that you've changed where if they did have a problem with their bill, it used to be that they could pay 12 months, and now it's down to six months. Why would that be?
That was a proposed adjustment that the interim finance director had proposed, but the law actually says that it's 12 full months. So in the clean version, it should, that, those changes were removed, and that the 12 months was actually left.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm looking at the red.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the explanation on that.
And we encourage a lot of people, too, to, there's an auto pay that comes out automatically, too.
That's what they...
I opted for that, believe me. I never wanted that to happen again.[674.16][674.16](laughter)
Anyone from the public? All right. We will look for a motion.
Now, I do have one other question here. I was reading, under the bills declared late. All payments are to be received no later than the ninth day of the following month in which the bill was dated and mailed. Now, does that leave room for some weird kind of loophole where if everything's running really efficiently and you get it out the last day of the month because they read the meters early, that you now have nine days to pay your bill?
Um...
You know what I mean? Because it would be the month prior if they got out and read all the meters on the 27th, and the bills were ready and out on the 30th. The way this is written, all payments are to be received no later than the ninth day of the following month in which the bill was dated and mailed. Now, does that leave room for some weird kind of loophole where if everything's running really efficiently and you get it out the last day of the month because they read the meters early, that you now have nine days to pay your bill?
Um...
You know what I mean? Because it would be the month prior if they got out and read all the meters on the 27th, and the bills were ready and out on the 30th. The way this is written, all payments are to be received no later than the ninth day of the following month in which the bill was dated and mailed.
So our practice is always to bill a month in arrears. So the month we're billing is always for the previous month of service.
Okay.
So it's unlikely that we would read two months' worth of meters in the same month.
Right. They wouldn't do that.
Yeah. Highly unlikely.
Councilmember Barnes is looking for a serious anomaly, just in case.
Just in case. I'm waiting for my late fee after nine days. I'm filling in. What's this? Well, no, it says in section 2.[789.16][789.16](laughter)
The water's turned off.
The water's just turned off. It's Christmas Eve.[795.73][795.73](laughter) You're going to give your bill, Barnes.
Should have had auto pay.
Should have had auto pay.[802.16][802.16](laughter)
Too bad.
I've had auto pay for years. I have no such valuable life experiences to share in this consideration of this item. My water payments have just been smooth as silk.[814.16][814.16](laughter) Thank you, minions.[816.16][816.16](laughter)
See, now, I actually had a really good experience with that. When I owned the pizzeria on Main, I forgot to pay my water bill because, you know, I had nothing else to do. But they came and turned off my water, and I ran down here with a check, and they were like, "Oh yeah, we can go right back up and turn it back on."
For $50.
For $50.[838.16][838.16](laughter)
Got a corporate pizza.
Yeah. But yeah, they turned it right around. So, I mean, in that instance, thank you. Appreciate it.
No, thank you for that extra $50.[851.16][851.16](laughter) Okay, anything else?
It's my stupid tax.
All right, we'll take a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, is this quadruple X, is that the actual number on there? Is it move to adopt a resolution, quadruple X, 2017, approving the revised administrative policy, utilities billing effective April 18, 2017?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have expedited project review for Pacific West Architecture's 24-unit Martin Street multifamily affordable housing architectural and design review application. Kevin?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow members of the council. Before I go through the details of this, I did realize there may be some confusion here. I want to make sure that it's known that this isn't the Bella Vista site, the already completed senior housing project that we're looking at. I mean, that's, that's a separate project from, this is located on a site, it's west of the intersection with Bevins and Martin Street, kind of directly across the street from the Sheriff's Department. And we, about two years ago now, I guess in 2015, there were land use entitlements secured for a 32-unit senior housing development at that site. Very similar to the Bella Vista project, and the same developers. We've actually formed a very good partnership with, with Pacific West and their, and their other team members. And because of that, that's the only reason that something like this is able to happen kind of in a smooth manner. So what we're asking for is basically in regards to the recent flooding events, it became very aware to us that we have an extreme shortage of affordable family housing. And although we still do have a high need for senior housing, the, the family housing need is kind of seems like it's a, hit kind of a critical emergency point. We were awarded a $4.5 million home grant for that previous senior development project in working with Pacific West and also talking directly with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, who oversees those programs. They have agreed to allow us to convert or kind of revise that project and change it over to a affordable family housing project. And so that's one of the items before you tonight is to make sure that that's the direction the council wants to take. If that is decided, because this project also needs the assistance of off-site improvements, which would come in the form of another grant through CDPG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, there's kind of an expedited process that we would need to go through in order to, in order to apply for those funds, which, that application deadline being right at the beginning of July. And a prerequisite to applying for those funds would be having the land use entitlement secured. So we'd be asking for you guys, per the housing element that allows for expedited review for affordable housing projects, among other qualified projects, to direct both the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission, who would likely need to hold a special meeting in order to meet that deadline, to take that into consideration. They have already applied for the projects. We have the application in hand. It is being currently circulated. The nice thing about this project is it's contained within the same existing development footprint, the 3.5 acres that the senior housing was. So all the previous environmental studies, hydraulic reports, utilities reports, archaeological, wetlands, all the, the full board is already completed. So we can revise the existing environmental documents, lean on the previous studies, which really will help in the expedited process. So it's a little complicated, but the flood emergency has kind of pushed this issue up a little closer, and the need seems to be, although there is a need for additional senior housing, I mean, that's what triggered that project in the first point, is because of the, there's an extreme waiting list at the Bella Vista project. But we're hopeful that this will hopefully lay the groundwork for even more future affordable housing projects as well. So, any questions on that? I mean, it's a two-part process. One, making sure that the council's okay with that switch, and the second one, directing staff and Planning Commission to expeditiously review the permit.
Great. Questions, comments?
Didn't we already do an expediting of the original project, the 32 unit?
Correct.
Correct. So now we're expediting the change.
Yes.
So that we get the 7000, you know.
And this, this one will be a little bit more simpler than that one because there has been so much previous work done, and Pacific West has done the hard part of it, making sure that they're staying within that original development footprint, so that we're not changing a lot of those environmental documents.
I think it's awesome how quick they flipped this over. We knew there was a need for family housing before, but right now it's really, really needed. So I didn't think that it would be able to flip over as quick as you guys have done it.
And as the staff report says as well, I mean, just because there's direction given to expeditiously review it, that doesn't in any way, you know, push the Planning Commission to, you know, that guarantees approval of the product, they will still review it for all its merits under the zoning ordinance and per sequa. But this would kind of give them a little bit more clarity on, on the nature of the deadline, and we've already talked to them a little bit, and they're aware that there'll probably be a special meeting in May if the council approves this this evening. So it's not going to be a total surprise to the Planning Commission. And as I said, staff's already moving forward with getting the review done.
It's kind of a combination of events, too. With all the fires, our rental stock is, you know, almost nil here, and let alone finding affordable housing for families. It's almost impossible, as we're finding out with all the families that have been displaced at this time.
So you said there was an excessive amount. Do you have, like, a ballpark figure on Bella Vista waiting list?
I've been told that it's more than a year, that the waiting list is more than a year, but I don't know numerically what that number is.
But isn't it true that this developer is also looking at a Phase 3 down the line, so that that could be coming down the pipeline?
This, this site, this 1255 Martin Street site is a 10 and 1/2 acre site, and that was one of the things that they liked about the site, is it does, it does make itself available for even more development. But this current development would only be on a 3 and 1/2 acre portion of it. But yes, that's one of the benefits, is if, if this works and the demand's still there, there may be future opportunity to offer even additional housing, whether it be senior or more family or, or whatever need we need in the future.
Yeah. George, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was curious. Are these units going to be sold as, like, condos, or are they going to be rented, or how is that going to work?
They would be rental. They'd be family, you know, kind of apartment, multifamily housing, so under a single ownership and rented out, you know, per contract. But there's going to be qualification requirements of...
Right, 60% of them.
You got it.
This is going to run the same as the senior housing, correct?
Well, it's, it's a little different in their parameters and qualifications of...
But they're going to build it and keep it?
Yes.
And run it?
Yes.
And keep the upkeep up.
Everything?
Yeah, because that was a concern, like, because it's right there off the highway. People can see it, it needs to be kept up.
Yeah, no, excellent company, and, well, I mean, we've seen Bella Vista...
Yes. And that's, that's part of the, some of the requirements of both the home grant funds and the CDPG funds, is it has to be maintained as a qualified housing.
And even stricter than that is the state tax increment that they, the funds they get. They're real strict about how they're up kept, and they're audited, I think annually, and so they definitely have to keep them up to meet all those criteria of the grants that they got for the housing. And the tenants even have to keep them up. They, they get walkthroughs.
Yes.
Okay. And do we know what the median salary is for a city in Lakeport?
It's set by the state, the HCD sets, well, HUD sets the standard every year for what that's medium, low, moderate, and there's moderate, low, and then very low income. And then I think they, some of the units are, are for low income, some are for very low income. So they do have to meet some of the criteria of the different income levels. They can't just be for low income. They're going to have to do, a few of them, they're going to be for very low income. And the, the rent is based on their income, percentage of their income, so they can afford the unit. And I think there's two, three, four bedroom units?
Yes.
Yeah.
There are four bedroom units?
Yeah, I would say that two and three.
Is it that there's about four?
I need three bedrooms, sixteen.
No, they're mostly two bedroom, and then there's some three. Two and three, okay. I thought they said four bedroom.
And then there's a community area.
Yeah. Anyway, they have different sizes for them.
So does the three bedroom apartment, does that mean our special needs requirement for housing for larger families? I can't remember if that's a three bedroom or a four bedroom minimum.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll have to look at that. I thought there were some four bedrooms that were proposed, and they're, no, they're only showing three bedroom units. I'll double check with them on that.
I thought, I mean, our conversation is at four, so, you know. But anyway. Yeah.
The report says 16 two bedrooms, three, or 83 three.
Correct. 83 three, okay, that's right. Any other questions from council?
So with this taking the place of the, the new senior housing development, would there be plans put into effect to start getting back on track with making, with building a senior housing?
Yeah, that's kind of what, what the, the nice thing here, and one of the big, the big benefits of the CDPG housing is it's mostly for off-site improvements, bringing sewer out to the site, changing up some of the PG&E requirements that are able to serve it, and then sidewalks and roadway improvements. So all the improvements that would go to this one would also benefit the future development in that area as well. And given the demand, I mean, the whole reason that Pacific West came back to us here in Lakeport was because of the high demand that they were seeing after the Bella Vista project. So there's definitely an interest on their part to continue to pursue future affordable development, which we're glad to hear because our, our housing needs statements show that there is a demand for senior families, special housing needs for, for other elements of our society as well, so. And there's a lot of room at the site. And they're also looking at other areas, too, so I mean...
So what you were saying is this is 10 acres, and they're going to use three for this, this project, and they may use part of the other 10 acres for seniors down there?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, because we don't want to shore our seniors, so...
No, and like I said, that's, you know, one of the, one of the, you know, kind of secondary benefits of this is, given our emergency, the, we're likely to score a little higher on the CDPG funding. We applied for the CDPG funds last year as well and did not get it for the senior project. So there may be some added benefit of, given our emergency, may allow us to score a little higher in there, and then that, that has the benefit in the future of those improvements will help serve, you know, future developments, whether those be senior housing or more affordable housing, or, or, like I said, if the need changes, that area's there as well.
Anyone from the public? Leah Passantinos here. She's the local representative for the developer. Do you want to come tell us anything?
Well, I'm here also, too, if anybody has questions with regards to the history or what the needs are. Pretty much, I've been here going on 17 years now, and it's why the new housing that's been put into Lakeport has a priority because of the need and because it's a beautiful area to live in. The demand at the Bella Vista, the first Bella Vista, that unit, those units, 48 units rented up in less than 48 hours, and six months later, there was a waiting list that went from a year and a half to two years. Where it's at right now, the last I heard, was more like a year and a half and higher, possibly up to two years. And then I'm confronted all the time as, when are they going to build the next one? So there's a huge demand for senior housing, but also workforce, veterans housing, I get approached all the time, which I've discussed with Kevin. So there's just a huge, a huge need for new, clean, safe, affordable housing throughout California, as far as that goes, but desperately here because this is an area that's somewhat off the grid, and not too many developers can afford to come here and build because of lumber, inexperienced, the lumber is very high, and the inexperience of the crew, that you have to bring in other people from outside. Then you also have to provide them housing. Same thing with the hospital. There's a huge desperate need. There's a lot of traveling nurses in, in the community that service the Lakeside Hospital. They don't have any places to go. They, they cohabitate, and they're desperate for some type of workforce housing that can be provided. So there's, there's so many avenues to go, but, and I've discussed that with, with Margaret and Kevin and Dan, that there's such a need here, it's just like, I'm like a kid with a candy jar sticking out there, and I gotta get involved in all of it, but in reality, I can't. So it's grant funding that's going to help, and in order to show the grant, to get the grant funding, the whole council needs to be, and the community needs to be supportive of what's going on, and more people be involved. So that's, if there's any questions specifically to that and how they operate, they do hold everything. They, the Pacific companies, I've worked with them now for going on nine years. They're an excellent company to work with. They're honest, they have integrity, and they build beautiful buildings that they keep, maintain. They do not sell anything, so. And they try to engage the locals... years, they're an excellent company to work with, they're honest, they have integrity, and they build beautiful buildings that they keep, maintain, they do not sell anything. So, and they try to engage the local communities into reincorporating workforce as much as possible within that skill level, and we're all aware of that. So, if there's any specific questions that any of you have, I'll try to draw the response that it might be helpful to you.
The thing that, that I'm really curious about is, if it's completely full and it's filled up within 48 hours, are they waiting for someone to die to get in there?
People don't want to move.
That's what I'm saying, so the waiting list could be totally academic. If everybody's happy, they're not going to kick them out in it after so many years. So, how exactly do they determine that it's a one and a half year waiting list if there's no reason for them to leave and they're not getting kicked out?
Because of the amount of the, the vacancy factor, if they're not moving, they're not turning over the apartments. So, it's a matter of, how many people does it take in succession to bring forward that is actually a real tenant? They are all screened, they're all pre-qualified, it's a matter of, they pick up the phone, and they've got a whole list of people that are pre-qualified to be able to move in. Sometimes those people have to move on because they can't wait, maybe there's an illness.
No, but I'm talking about the people that are already living there, they have to vacate before someone can go in there.
Not forcefully.
No, but I mean, so...
It's some of everything.
Yeah, so I mean, they're like moving on.
Some people move on, or they move in with family, or they go to a care home.
Yeah. This isn't an assisted facility, so sometimes...
No. These are just ambulatory people.
It's hypothetical, if it's a year and a half waiting list.
Just basic...
Oh, no. It's, it's, there's a huge list of applications.
No, I think he was wondering how you got to the year and a half to two-year...
Backlog.
We understand there's a list of people waiting to get in, but are there, is there a lease on the building, like, we may not, you may not renew the lease for a tenant?
It's just an estimate.
That's what I'm saying, it just seems kind of like an arbitrary number.
Well, no, she's saying that the people waiting is for sure long, but it could be even longer. We don't know how soon people will leave.
If everybody's happy and no one's moving, it could be 10 years.
Yeah.
It could be, definitely, in marine...
That was my point, yeah.
Yeah, in marine, well, I don't get into the management. I'm the upfront land acquisition person that puts the deals together, makes sure they're going to work, and once I see that everybody's a happy camper, then we go forward and we pester these people to assist us and then go after the tax grant funding and find a way to make it work, because otherwise, there's no such thing as affordable housing without assistance in today's reality.
And the whole point is, is that it could be five, 10 years before these people get in there, which, which means that the need is greater, which means the need for granting is greater. My point, being in the whole point is, it's a year and a half, but in, in essence, it could be three, four, five years for some of those people that are 10 down the list could get in there, because no one's leaving unless they happen to pass away. So, we really need more senior housing, and that was my point, is that this seemed like a very arbitrary number, which could be irrelevant if no one leaves.
Yeah, they go on, they're, they have a certain formula that they go on in management. I don't get involved in management, thank God.
Then you'd have to have another conversation with them.
I'd have to have a conversation with somebody higher than that. If I had to get in management, all the patience for that, the land, yes, the land, I'll put that together and do contracts and all the legal stuff with David's backing and corrections and, but I don't do the, if they say they want's, it gets the approvals, I just...
Well, thank you for bringing them to town.
Yeah. So, when you mentioned the, the need for additional public support, as well as members of the public getting involved, what sort of, of ways were you thinking?
I was thinking of engaging the community to know what affordable housing actually is and how it's put together, some type of an open forum, and to where people, the community actually gets an opportunity to know what you do better, what the community, and, and what your jobs are, and how you contribute towards making the economy, towards boosting the economy, making it work. Running a city is a business, it's, it's, as Margaret knows, it's, it's a hard business when you're counting beans, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing to run a business on a shoestring. And law enforcement has found out that it's difficult to stretch too far without still having thread on the tires or units to put into the circulation to serve the public, you can't do that without money. And when you engage the community, they understand more of what each one of you do to contribute towards their well-being.
Agreed.
Just a thought.
By the way, I neglected to mention that Cameron Johnson, who is the one working on this project, he was really trying to be here tonight, but he couldn't change his, his meeting in Alaska, he's in Alaska right now, he tried to change it to be here, but it didn't work, so I was, forgot to mention that to you.
We could have sent a car to get him.
He's actually in a meeting right now in Alaska, so...
Any questions for Leah while you got her?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, ready to talk? There's no other discussion, we'll look at a motion.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the City of Lakeport revise its current home investment partnership award to pursue the development of a 24-unit affordable multifamily housing project located at 1255 Martin Street, and direct the community development department and planning commission expeditiously process the land use entitlement application provided by Pacific West Architecture for the project, consistent with the goals and policies outlined in the Lakeport Housing Element.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Next, we have the ad hoc committee selection for Measure Z Independent Citizens Advisory Committee. Kelly?
So, as the council may remember, at the March 21 regular meeting, the council appointed an ad hoc committee to select the Measure Z Advisory Committee, which I'm referring to as AMZAC.
Wow!
I know. Balls on the tongue, I sound like a rapper. So, the ad hoc committee got together and made these recommendations, and I believe Mayor Matino will comment a little bit on the process. One request that I do have of the council this evening is that when selecting the committee members, that you consider having terms ending December 31st. This will make recruitment more efficient, because that's what all of our other terms for commissions and committees end. And also, I think in, in kind of keeping things the way we do with other committees, if we could split the terms, three members and two members in offsetting years, that would also make recruitment and function of the committee better, so...
So, the process was great, because we had 12 applicants that were all really great applicants, and we had only five seats. So, we had a set of about five questions that we were able to ask them all and get an idea of how they feel about the measure, and how they work in a group, to kind of decide who would best fit that group. And it looks like we have three of them here tonight, so if you guys want the opportunity to come up, we do need to pick who's on a two-year, and is it two and five? Two and...
It'd be two and...
Two and four.
Almost two and four.
Either one and two or two and three, yeah.
It's a little under, but it's about three and a half.
So, if, if you want, if any of you want to come up and say anything about how, which term you'd prefer, if you have a preference?
You might get first choice.
You might get first choice. Anyone?
I'm okay with anyone.
Either one?
Anything's good.
All right.
That's the spirit.
See, they work well in groups. Councilman Barnes, did you want to add to that?
No, I'm, all of the applicants were really great, it was a hard decision to make, but I feel like we got a very good representation of Lakeport who came out for that. So, I was making little notes to myself, and we seem to have a very well-rounded group with different concerns in the community, and I feel like all of those voices will be heard with this group, so. And I think that the three who showed up should get the four-year spots.
You draw the long straws. Well, the one thing that, what I'd like to do is thank the, the entire staff and those that participated on there for making this a lot less difficult than it could have been by having the ad hoc committee and doing it separately, and then coming in here with recommendations, because it could have been a very laborious and arduous task to try and sift through all this in a regular council meeting. So, I really appreciate the efforts that everybody made outside of this meeting, so that we can expedite it and get it done here today. And thank you, everybody that volunteered, even those that may not be selected.
Well, and to add to that, we met some great people that really want to volunteer, and we're looking at other things that they might offer some time to contribute to. So, it was a great process.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo that about the 12 people. It's great that we have that many people that were interested in doing this, and I'm, I'm glad that we have that kind of participation in, in the city.
Yeah, very nice.
All right, who is, who's here tonight?
We have Dennis, Annette...
And Nathan.
And Nathan.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a mo-, make a motion to appoint Annette Hopkins, Susan King, Dennis Rollins, Nathan Speed, and Tim Wynon to the Measure Z Advisory Committee, with Tim Wynon and Susan King, terms expiring December 31, 2018, and Annette Hopkins, Dennis Rollins, Nathan Speed, terms expiring December 31, 2020.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you very much.
We also have our first meeting, we'll be getting out to everybody, but May 11, Thursday at 5:00 PM, if that works for everyone, we'll get our first meeting going.
They were hired, didn't it work?
Is that going to be here in the council?
It'll be here in the council chambers. We're going to be kind of rushed, because, and we're in the middle of budget season, and we need to get the Measure Z committee looking at possible items for the Measure, Measure Z. So, hopefully that works for everyone.
Did you say 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM.
Is there going to be a report per meeting that they have, so that we can get like emails on what's going on, and where the money's being spent, and what they think's the high profile?
Well, we'll, we'll be bringing that back to council, what their recommendations are on, on the spending, because it's, it's, what is it, their advisory, they're just making recommendations to the council, and the council's actually the ones that will be making those decisions.
So, so...
They'll come back and do a presentation.
What I'm kind of looking forward is, you know, here's our Measure Z money that we have collected, and here's the kind of projects we're going to do, and this is the recommendation from the committee, and kind of keep an eye on where the monies are and what the projects are. That's kind of what I'm looking for, so. I'm assuming that's what we're going to be getting, something like that.
Absolutely, yeah. We'll be, well, the staff will be making some recommendations also, because this is our budget, and yours for the capital items, and different things that we would like to see, and of course, we'll get what their input to and what, you know, outside of that too, but, so our timing is, I won't say rushed, but a little bit more rushed this year, just because of the time, the time we have to get our, our budget in and get things done. But, yeah, there'll be a report to council as to what was recommended, or what, you know, what their recommendations are, and...
Where the revenue stream is coming from and type thing like that.
Well, it's a Measure Z, yes, we'll give you a total on what that, right now, it's going to be what we believe it to be, and then next year we'll have a better...
Understanding, right?
Understanding of it, yeah, as it goes forward. And, yeah.
Okay. Onward, council communications. Margaret, do you want to start?
Nothing further, I think.
David?
No report.
David?
Nothing to report.
Nick?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the police department is in the process now of making a selection for, for an existing officer that will be doing the business neighborhood and community outreach police officer position. We're hoping to have somebody selected by the middle of next month for that position. And once that happens, they'll be starting to work on that project in a part-time capacity until such time that we have backfill staff, and then they can move forward in full-time capacity.
Good. Kelly?
Nothing to report.
Kelly, no report. Councilmember Spur?
Tomorrow's legislative days in Sacramento, and I'm planning on attending that, so, see what's going on down there. I have some questions for the tenant after the meeting, but other than that, nothing to report.
Councilmember Privet?
Just wanted to say that I had some conversations with the chief and with Mr. Dow from the traffic safety analysis 19th Street, and we all kind of agreed that because of the flooding, you know, because of all the flooding and the activity and the surveillance and everything that chief had to do, that they hadn't been able to do enough enforcement down there. And Mr. Dow thought that it would not be a good idea, and so did the chief, so we're going to put that off until we've had a chance to do enforcement, you know, to kind of strengthen the idea. But he did say that he has his own little gun, that he can go out and do some preliminary stuff before he does the actual study, just to let people know that we're still on that, we're still working towards getting that lowered, because the provisional speed limit at 80% has to be lowered before we can ever get down to 25, and I know the people out there really want to do that. And so, they're all right on top of that. So, I just want to let you know that I've talked to both of them, and they're working on it.
And I do have a, we'll be working with Mr. Dow out in the field, hopefully by the end of the month also.
Good.
And, and I'm assuming it's a radar gun, not just a gun.
Yeah, he's not shooting anybody.
Slow down.
And, and the traffic calming, but, I mean, those haven't dropped off, dropped off or, those are still on task. It's, it's more of a, an issue of weather.
Weather dependent.
Yeah.
To get those in there. But they, that's still a priority of, of the city.
Good. Councilmember Barnes?
Um, nothing really to report.
You weren't late for the fire meeting.
I was at the Measure Z, so I wasn't late for that meeting this time, so. The only thing I have to report is my, my sister-in-law's homeschool group went to a field trip at the police station, and they could not say enough nice things about your officers and the way they were treated and the experience. She made sure to come up and tell me how great it was, and how much the kids learned, and how it was just a really great experience, so...
I appreciate you mentioning that. I heard that my staff had conducted a field trip, I guess it was last Friday, I was out of town, but, so thank you for mentioning that. And that's all.
Councilmember Turner?
We started planning National Night Out, it was a great community event last year, so we're looking forward to doing that again. And that is it.
So, thanks, everyone, for coming, meeting adjourned.